Good evening. This time I'd like to call the Hamilton County Council meeting to order. If we could, Madam Auditor, if you could note the presence of a quorum.
Yes, Brad Beaver.
Here.
Paul Ayers.
Here.
Fred Glenn.
Present.
Steve Schwartz.
Present.
Rick McKinney.
Present.
Amy Masalomani.
Present.
Jeff Hearn.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. You all rise to the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance by a council from the county. Can just bow our heads for a moment. Dear gracious God, thank you for this time to be here and represent our fellow citizens, help us to make wise decisions as we allocate the resources of the citizens. Thank you again for the individuals in the county that protect us and protect those who are here and not as fortunate as us. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, for everybody who's had a chance to read, I'd like to entertain a motion for the minutes of the regular session on July 11th and the work session on July 11th.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Madam Auditor, do we need a motion on the executive session memorandum? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. This time I would entertain public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that has anything to say that's not on our agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. Committee and officer reports. I just have one. I just wanted to thank everybody for all their hard work during the 4H Fair, for all those who attended and participated. There was record-breaking attendance this year. It really went off very well. So, thank you. Mr. Vice President.
The only thing I got, I sat in on a meeting that, if you remember, once we stopped the courthouse room addition project, we agreed to go ahead and do the utility relocation. And so we had a meeting over a month ago with some contractors to talk about it. At that time, it became apparent that the $450,000 that we were going to spend for utility relocation was not going to be adequate to do the utility relocation. Since then, I think the commissioner's been going back and forth and negotiating with him. We were set to have another meeting, but that got canceled at the last minute. So, all I want to tell you is, as of now, when I've said into the 450, it's probably not going to get the utilities relocated. I conveyed to the commissioners and the other contractors that we wanted the utilities relocated and that we ended up, we need to come up with a number, but don't stop work. And, and the work has not started. Don't stop the work of getting ready. Continue on until you've got a final number. Does that about cover it, would you say, Mark? We haven't had the, the, another meeting to find out what the final number is, but 450, 450 may not get it done.
Do you know when that next update is set to occur?
No, I don't. Probably in the next 30 days, I would assume. Mark may have more on this.
There has been some, we've looked at the substation over here across the street, over here at the Noblesville parking lot. We've had some discussions with the engineer over there about whether we could run the utilities over there instead of putting a new transformer over here across the street. There'll be significant savings if we were able to make the connection there. After that meeting that we had with Duke Energy, we're still looking into whether it's feasible to be able to do that, and there could be some cost-effective benefits of being able to do that. So that's kind of where we are, and Steve Wood, our Director of Facilities, is trying to set up that meeting with the general contractor to review the information. Any other questions?
They, they said that 450 probably wouldn't be enough, but they didn't give you guys like an approximate indication of what would be.
It was approximately 50 to 70,000 dollars more than the 450.
Yeah, it was.
But it was a technical thing about feeding it from two different areas, what Mark is talking about, maybe feed it from another area. But there's another discussion about the generator. When we know specific, when we've got a specific number, we'll, we'll come back.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
And, and one other thing about that particular project, and it, but it was brought to our attention, I think, at the same meeting that one of our contractor, designer, engineering. Because we didn't go to. What is that? Is that my? No, I'll talk to you about it. I'm not. But the fact that, you know, we got right up to it and then we did not sell the bonds, that we did not go forward with it, somehow they. Didn't go forward with the project. All myself. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Moving on, highway. We did not meet. Okay. Finance committee. Personnel.
We had a poll, and one of those items is on the agenda. The other will be heard at budget hearings.
Okay. Anything under miscellaneous? This time, I'm going to introduce Nancy Chance again, and she has somebody that would like to come and speak. Next month, she's going to do this as well, and we'll get you on the regular agenda for next month.
Thank you for allowing us to come today. Jason Haney is not going to be here today because he has a dedication for Habitat at 6 o'clock, but she's going to bring out some of the collaboration that's going on.
Lauren from.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lauren Gwynne, and I'm the Executive Director for the Shepherd Center of Hamilton County, and we help older adults maintain their independence. So all of our programs and services center around that goal. One of the reasons myself and Jason wanted to come tonight was to let you know that we have officially launched the Hamilton County Home Repair Partnership. This is a partnership that has combined lots of different organizations in the county that have been doing home repairs altogether. And the three main organizations are myself from Shepherd Center, Habitat for Humanity, and HAND, Hamilton County Area Neighborhood Development. We have each kind of, the three of our organizations taken on the administrative role for the program, but it is now our goal that we will be the main hub for all home repairs for any residents in the county. And so we just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of this new program that we've started and the new partnership that we've started. The commissioners, we've informed them. And the Community Development Block Grant, we've formally applied for them as well, and so we're excited to get this launched and started for all of our residents. The majority, and the main reason for my organization participating is the majority of applicants are people 55 and older, who have been homeowners in Hamilton County for a long time. And as they age, they have issues that come up with their home that are important for them to maintain that residency and to maintain independent in their home. So it's been a great collaboration and partnership, and we just wanted to make sure you were aware. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have one question. So it's, it's more rehab than it is new build? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Absolutely, absolutely. So we, it's a combination of repairs, rehabilitation, and modifications. So we're doing things like grab bars, door widening to help improve safety for people, but as well as rehabbing and repairing old homes, which is a big reason why both Habitat and HAND have been involved. That's kind of their area of expertise, definitely not mine. So it's been a great partnership for us.
Thank you so much.
This is an action in SAWs is also involved. So you've got. I don't want to interfere, but I want to turn the news off the press. For Hamilton County.
What does that mean?
Yeah, what do you? Oh, okay.
Great. Another reason why Hamilton County is number one. Thank you for helping organize all that. Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming. We'll see you again next month. Okay, anything else under miscellaneous?
What is it, like an ongoing update on, what do you?
Just on the non-for-profits, they had a get-together for us back in the spring, and a lot of us weren't able to attend, so we talked and thought it was best if they came in front of us each month. Tell what they do. There's no request.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Under miscellaneous, I would like to entertain moving the, having the September meeting after budget hearings, like we did last year. Did it, we did it.
Go ahead.
I was going to, I was just trying to combine the two. We did this, this, I'm pretty sure we did this last year.
Last year, we did it after the first day. Yeah, of the first day.
Does that work with all the dates that the auditor has?
Much needs to be changed, just for, to move it to 4 o'clock. Oh, that, that, yeah.
Questioning out with that date was a 6 o'clock, and we were making sure that we were done.
That the 12?
First day and moving it, yeah, and moving it.
Yeah, we can't.
To the second day, because we were extending those that we wanted to have the dialogue, so we extended it to, so my preference would be no, but just based on that. My preference, just based on that, I think it would be. Does that mean?
Well, if it's that date, I, we can't do it, so we can't do it that day before. We, I mean, I don't know, what's everybody, everybody else's thoughts on that? Putting it either that day or the last day? Is there any?
Well, the last day, we have stuff scheduled, correct? But, I mean, but we don't need to start it at 4:00. We could start it earlier.
Yeah.
As long as you advertise, you can start late.
You've got to stick with advertising.
Right.
If, if that doesn't work, that's fine. I just thought it would be, you know.
I would propose we just, based on that conflict, we just go ahead and stick with the date as is.
I agree.
No motion?
No motion.
Stay as is. Okay, anything else under miscellaneous? Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven on your agenda, and it's unfinished business. In front of us, tabled business. I believe there's no desire to untable anything this evening, moving to new business, and that's vendor claims.
So moved. Approve, sorry.
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item B is a resolution of the Hamilton County Council recommending the 2019 property tax levy limits for taxing units.
Rick, that number's 3.4.
Thank you.
What is it again, Robin?
3.4.
3.4?
Percent, percent. This might be approved yet. Second. This replaces the non-binding reviews.
And the, the detail on this is just that we're recommending to all other taxing entities in the county that their 2019 budget doesn't exceed the six-year non-farm personal income factor, which is what the state requires, and it's 3.4%.
Thank you. Moving on to item C on your agenda. I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item C, there's no motion needed here, just acknowledgement. The Noblesville Schools, it will be doing a referendum. Anybody has any questions?
So moved. They're having that.
No motion needed.
Do we have a motion? Do we need a motion?
No motion needed.
Recognize, okay, sorry. So it doesn't, on this, that's in front of us. Dollars, it didn't, didn't give a dollar amount.
.37 on each hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it doesn't state, like, 15.6 million or?
I thought it was 30 million dollars, I think it was round dollars.
50.
Is it 50?
6, 6.25 million a year for eight years.
Yeah, it's a chunk. Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we'll move on on our agenda, and this is vacancy backfill bookkeeping.
I'll make a motion if it's possible to go ahead and combine numbers one and six.
So moved, right, seconded.
Further discussion on this? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 As opposed, motion carries. This time, I will open the public hearing concerning additional appropriations. Additional appropriations, 144 amendments, transfers, and reductions. And the first one is item A. It's from the County General Fund. It's emergency management. It's a transfer for 8,700 dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Also under A, there's a Sheriff 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, Sheriff, on this, you want to.
This is actually what Dennis Quaken Bush had presented to personnel, and you received it in a double slot.
Until he moves over, right?
Administrative personnel, Cheryl Garner, she's been with us for 37 years.
She's going to retire?
Retiring at the end of the year, so we're asking to bring on a, a new young lady in September to start working with Cheryl, to bring her up to speed, so Cheryl can spend some time with her and try to instill 37 years of institutional knowledge in the young lady in three months' time, so she can continue.
Have any idea how much that double fill in that cost? What cost, what did?
I, I, I don't know for sure. I anticipate it will be somewhat of a wash, because when Cheryl retires, she's at a higher salary than the young lady's coming in at, so it should balance out fairly equally at the end of the day.
She's coming on September, might spend, what, 20, 30,000 dollars double fill in that?
No, I don't, not that much.
I was just trying to get it generally, okay.
Because you're going to have to have one, one of them there anyway.
You already got somebody spotted?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I had.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 As opposed, motion carries. Thank you. The next item is B on your agenda. It's the radio fund. They're requesting 32,334 dollars.
So moved.
Second.
That's just a transfer, Madam Auditor, it looks like?
To reimburse.
Reimburse, yeah, okay.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, thank you. Motion carries. Item C is the Monon Greenway Right-Away Fund, and the first item there is a reduction, 103,151 dollars and 30 cents.
Want to do the reduction and transfer at the same time?
I would entertain that.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on those? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That closes out that grant, Robin.
Perfect. Thank you. Item D on your agenda, it's Community Corrections Grant. It's a transfer again, 21,876 dollars and 92 cents.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Another transfer, it's item E. It's the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Transfer. It's $4,848.70.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item F, it's the Veteran Court Problem-Solving Grant, and they're requesting $9,000.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item G.
Other grant.
Other grant. They're requesting $10,000. It's the Problem-Solving Drug Court Grant, and it's $10,000.
Madonna, is, she's here.
Pay for drug screens.
Drug screens, okay, never mind. Okay.
Ask Madonna any questions on that one? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. H, the Veterans Court Treatment Grant, and they're requesting $29,065.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Other grant, it's a Foreign Language Interpreter Grant. They're requesting $2,277.
So moved.
Second.
Your name's all over these, Amy.
They're grants, they're just trying to...
She worked hard this month.
They're trying to appropriate their money.
She has been busy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to J. It's the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, and they're requesting $62,416.
So moved.
This is for the new grant for the 2018, 2019 year.
All righty.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item K, which is the last one, is the Pre-Trial Supervision Grant, and they're requesting $96,500.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Appropriating.
What is that?
Grant money. So, it's appropriating the grant money from the Supreme Court regarding insurance.
It's a permanent grant? Because I see the Social Security Group Insurance Retirement on there.
This is...
What they did.
Here comes the lady with the...
This is what they kind of ordered us to have as a trial? Is that part of this thing? I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
This is a grant money from the Supreme Court that helps pay for one staff person, public defenders, and additional hearings. And also helps supplement some of our other staff individuals. Have to apply for it every year.
Oh, okay. How, how many years have you gotten it?
Third.
Have they?
Thank you, Stephanie.
Have they ever looked into the Public Defender Commission's recommendations that they claim saves a couple million dollars for? Have we ever looked into the, something like that?
Ollie wants to talk on that.
I, I mean, I don't want to spend the rest of the evening talking about it. I'm just curious, because they, like 60 other counties do it, and they claim it'll save us a lot of money. I'm not getting into the politics of it. Eventually, we'll probably be forced into doing by the legislature, in my opinion, but, so I'm just asking. Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thanks, Ollie.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. This time, I will close the public hearing and moving on to announcements. Sheriff?
I have to report this evening.
Okay. Counsel attorney, Mr. Jeters?
Nothing for the group.
Madam Auditor?
Yes, I do. Dawn and I, when we attend our conferences and seminars, we found that encumbrances have to be acted upon by the council. And so, we will get you more information, but we will probably ask you for a special meeting in December. Once we get those on the books, then you guys will have to, to approve those encumbrances. So, so that's coming. Like I said, I'll get you more information, but like I said, it probably will be a special meeting needed in December.
Before December 31st? We couldn't do it at our first meeting in January?
We can check, but, but...
I can't remember what that says.
We'll, we'll check and see. Or, like I said, it could be something. I know in the past, we've ratified certain things that, that have happened after the fact. So, but just so you know, that, that might be coming, so.
Can I, from that time, also ask, what was your thoughts on what the DLGF had said about urging counties to use transfers more than additional appropriations?
I'm on tape, no. A lot of what, what they're saying makes sense. I think, you know, you're always going to have additional appropriation requests. They're going to be needed. I know Dawn and I've talked a little bit about after, so after the first of the year, we always have dollars catching up with 144s. So, it makes a lot of sense that we could go till the end of the year to see, because, you know, you have a lot of movement within departments. So, that, that makes a little bit of sense. The other thing that Mr. Bennett is kind of talking about and pushing is grants that you know you have every year, going ahead and, and budgeting those. And then, it could be some minor adjustments, because, you know, you could get less or more. So, it, it makes sense from, from, you know, a fiscal standpoint to transfer what you can. But then, I think it's going to fall on county councils to, to budget apples to apples. And I know, we've worked with the council the last few years about line items that we've changed, or we know that, you know, in the past, it wasn't budgeted, you know, the right amount. So, it might be making those changes in the council, saying, okay, yeah, instead of a zero policy of no increases in certain series, you may have to do that, just because we've always come back and done additional appropriations before. So, so, yeah, so it's doable. And like I said, that's something we're looking at, because there's a big push down there as far as, you know, what, what they're approving for additionals and, and things like that, so.
Thanks. I mean, and, you know, I wasn't going to put you on the spot in whether or not we talked about it, you know, together at budget time. What I, the input I was getting from him, you know, is that every one of these requests that we and everybody, every unit sends him, means somebody down there has to act on it as well. And he's just looking at man-hours and that sort of thing, and transfers don't have to go to them. So, that's what he was trying to say.
I, I think that...
But, yeah, but we're, we're open. And like I said, we know it's coming. We really think there might be a push to have local units of government push up their adoption time, which, you know.
I think that we should also be looking for, trying to get legislation. Cutting down on the additional appropriations, which would have an impact on it. How would this, this whole list of grants that we're doing additional appropriations, how would that impact this work that we've just done?
Well, you, you'd still have to do it, but what Mr. Bennett was saying, there's a few of those grants that you get every year. And so, we would go ahead and, and budget those at budget time. But whenever a department goes out and gets a grant, you're going to have an additional regardless. And that's a new State Board of Account rule that started, you know, a few years ago. When, you guys remember that fiasco? I mean, it was, you know, what did we have, 50 or 60 funds that we had to?
All right.
Any other counsel under announcements? Seeing none. We are adjourned.
Thank you.